Is it seven o'clock?
Seven oh two.
All right, it's seven oh two on February sixteenth, two thousand and two-two zoning board of adjustment meeting is going to commence.
The meeting's starting.
I'll start by taking a roll call. Ray Damaris, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, Ray.
Okay, Ray is here by video. Paul Tibido?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Here by video.
Hi, Paul.
Hi, Paul.
Hi, Lo.
Dave Witten?
Here.
George Bailey?
Here.
Cheryl Huckins here. Okay, and we have Connor, Town Administrator, and John Huckins, Code Enforcement Building Inspector. Okay, our first action item here is to vote for Chair and Vice Chair. Do you guys want to do that tonight, or would you rather do it when we're all here?
I think we should table it till we're all there.
Oh.
I feel the same way. I do.
You gotta make a motion to continue till we're all present.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Paul, aye.
Okay, so that's gonna be tabled. Okay, the next item says at the December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the board voted to rehear the following case, two-two-zero dash fifty-four point sixteen dash G R dash twenty-one dash Z B A um V A R, request by the applicant for a variance from Article seven point three home occupation to continue running a home occupation that is non-compliant in the general residential zoning district by Brendan A. O'Donnell Esquire, D T C lawyers, and this is for New Hampshire, one-twenty-five, Unit Two, Merrimack, New Hampshire.
I believe since, yeah, Madam Chair, I think since the the person who filed the rehearing request has rescinded that request, there's really no reason to rehear this case this evening. And I am making a motion to rescind our or revoke our December vote to not rehear this case now and let the October decision stand.
I will not second that, sir.
I'll second it.
Should we vote?
So while we can discuss, we have a motion and discussion. I think the October decision was the best we could do with a significantly flawed ordinance. It's flawed. No matter how you look at this ordinance, it's flawed. And the decision, and the decision we came up with follows the the reading of that ordinance. It's written, and yes, two-way tactical definitely got, you know, the benefit of that poor writing. As a result of our vote, the town is gonna change this ordinance. In fact, I expect to see it. A new, a new ordinance in the March ballot when we vote. So if this decision is temporary, chances are that that new ordinance will probably not have some grandfathering. So two-way tactical may have to move fairly quickly to get out of that. The town is having to work with two-way tactical now as well. So I think from a legal perspective, I think we made the right decision. And politically, I think it was the right decision. So that's my my case, so.
It's a legally existing grandfathered use. So even if the zoning changed, they'll be allowed to continue to status quo to what you guys said they could.
Even if it's properly sold?
Even if the zoning changes, they're legally existing grandfathered.
Miss George?
It's my understanding that they received, after I checked yesterday's planning board, they got the approval, conditional approval. Thank you for that. And I think that, you know, two-way tactical is showing they want to move forward and they want to comply. So I have to agree with Ray's motion.
With that said, they would still be able to continue operating at both places. There's nothing that says he has to leave if you guys determine that he's in compliance.
Come on, John, they're not gonna do that. They're not gonna stay there.
I'm telling you legally what it stands.
I'd like to speak. I disagree with you, Ray. I believe that sometimes zoning boards do make mistakes, and I think we made a very bad mistake. One thing we overlooked is the retail. Retail sales are not allowed in a business or a home occupation. They need to undergo site reviews through the planning board, and that was never done. I think this has been a flagrant violation of our of our rules. I think that a reasonable person reading the home occupation regulations would norm, would just, it's unreasonable to believe that that something left out. Then let me finish speaking, please. Does anything left out of an ordinance would automatically allow for a flagrant violation to the point where it surpasses even the next level up, which would be a home business? That's not reasonable to. I don't know, is our attorney available to weigh in on this?
Available to phone.
Attorney who's available if you. It's if the majority of you decide you would like to have a discussion here.
Yes, I also don't feel that we had enough enough input from our attorney either to make a decision. He wasn't really allowed to speak, and I didn't feel I was allowed to speak either at that meeting.
The attorney is not here to speak.
I am, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm here. If you want me to speak, this is a public hearing. And attorney-client communications are privileged. They can remain, they can remain outside of the public. So however, the the board, I am the board's attorney, and if the board votes to have me speak in public, in other words, to waive the attorney-client privilege, then I can speak on on the issues. But I but I hesitate to do so without a board, at least a core or a majority of the board voting to have me speak on on the legal issues. The other option is to is to go into into non-public session.
Paul, he hasn't had an opportunity to speak.
I think it would be a commotion to allow Attorney Puffett to speak in this public session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Well, Ray, did you vote?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's five oh.
I guess the the motion that's now pending, as I understand it, is to not rehear it because of the withdrawal by the the butter party, the original party. For the following reasons, I I would not recommend that you do so. First of all, a zoning board of adjustment has the authority on its own to rehear a matter even if someone does not apply for a rehearing. That's number one. Number two is you voted to rehear it on December fifteenth. And so I think you should go forward for that reason. My third, perhaps overriding reason, is I think that in October, your October decision was clearly in error. And you have a chance, you have an opportunity to correct that decision. That's what the rehearing process is for. That's the way, why it's set up that way, so that the zoning board, before the matter goes to court, if it's gonna go to court, before before any of that happens, the zoning board is given the opportunity to correct decisions that are erroneous. And so for those reasons, I think you should rehear it.
Thank you.
Attorney Puffett, I have a question.
I'd like to speak if I could.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, the reason I think we should rehear it is that, I'm sorry?
Do you recognize?
Yes, well, he started, Dave started to speak first. We'll recognize Dave in that.
That's fine. Yep, go.
So you said that the board can rehear a case at any time? Is that correct?
Can rehear a case at any time? Generally speaking, no, not at any time. I mean, if if the period for filing a rehearing has gone by and no one has filed an application, then the board doesn't have the authority to hear it. But if if within that time period you decide to rehear it, you may. You have the inherent inherent authority to correct your own mistakes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Paul?
I'm wanting to rehear it, is that we've received several letters from the butters that felt that they didn't, not have the opportunity to speak at the last meeting. And they have some opinions here, valid, in my point, in my opinion. And I think we should hear them out, either by reading their letters or if they're present, they can, they can speak if they want to during the public session. But there is enough, there are enough opinions from the butters that did not get a chance to speak that I think this merits a rehearing.
Would you like me to read the letters? I'd be willing to do that if you like.
We have the motion first.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We gotta vote on the motion. We gotta vote on my motion.
Not rehear this case.
Okay. So we're gonna vote now on, this is the vote to not rehear.
Correct. So an affirmative void vote would be not rehearing the case, correct?
Yep.
Bailey, no.
Cheryl, no.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the three to two vote, no.
Right. Rehearing the case.
Rehearing the case.
See, didn't cover this part.
That done?
That's the reason why we didn't do this.
What would you want me to do next? Would you like to discuss this? Would you like me to read these letters from the butters?
Could I make a suggestion? In the past zoning board meetings, it allowed people that supported it to speak.
All right.
We did the ones that were opposed to speak.
Okay.
And I think reading the appropriate category.
Just a moment, just a moment. You voted, we just voted to rehear the case. You gotta start all over again. The applicant has to present their case, and after they presented their case, the board can ask them questions. And after that, then you ask people in the public to speak for, and then all those for against, and then you deliberate. That is the process.
So now, now, I thought I saw somewhere where, I'm not sure, Attorney Donald, O'Donnell, do you, um, do you present the entire case again? Is there an abbreviated?
First things I'm just to ask you to bring forward everything.
I wanna make sure we do this right.
Right, we do have a recorded meeting, and I'll ask Attorney Puffett, can we accept all of the previous meeting as evidence and start from there? That the entire meeting in the past, so we don't have to restart all over again, just, you know, maybe some summarization, but start from there.
Yes, you may. You may. So normally, if there's a rehearing, you were correct, that it's a it's a full rehearing. You start all over again, but the board, in its discretion, can decide to accept the evidence that was presented. I guess this would be back in in October and then allow others to speak. And that's that's particularly so where you have the same members sitting now as you had in in October.
Yep, so, okay, I will make a motion that the October meeting be added as evidence to this case here tonight so we can, we don't have to, you know, start all over again. We can just start with whatever new information we have. Perhaps the applicant can make a small summary and then go from there.
That sounds right.
I second that.
All right, everybody in favor of that? Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
So to make sure I'm clear, that was a vote to draw forward everything that happened at the prior two hearings to this. So they're.
Don't have to rehear it.
Okay. Yeah, I guess the first thing I'd just like to start, and I just wanted to put on the record, that I think it's fundamentally unfair that this board has taken five to six months at this point and is restarting this entire case based on one alleged procedural violation, even when Acting Chair Desmurey made it clear multiple times during the last hearing that they were open for public comment on the issue of whether the business was in compliance with the ordinance, not on variance. All the people had an opportunity to speak. Mr. Bianchi was present at the meeting. In fact, people did speak against it. And the fact that all of this time, money, and effort that went into multiple hearings previously is now gone to waste because this continues to be dragged on for what is a moot procedural violation is particularly frustrating, and I'd just like that noted in the record.
Madam Chair.
Second, I apologize.
Ray, Chris.
Well, let him finish giving his stump and we can ask.
All right, I just wanted to give a brief update at the outset on continued efforts to relocate. As member Bailey did note, the planning board did issue a draft notice of conditional approval yesterday for the new facility. Again, that process also took many, many months and was the product of a lot of time, effort, and work on the part of Rob and all of the contractors that he's working with. Second, Mr. Russell requested from the Police Department information regarding any parking citation or traffic complaints. We'd previously provided that information from Chief Joy. He got it through current to yesterday, and I'm happy to provide a copy if the board would like, but there are still no parking citations of any kind related to this business. There are still no complaints regarding to traffic related to this business. Additionally, at the request of the Fire Department, Mr. Russell had an independent person, contractor come in to do a fire and life safety code inspection. That inspection revealed that in general, there were no major violations of fire and life safety code regarding the business in its current state. The only things that were noted were, I think, one out of, there were thirty-two fire extinguishers that was out of date, and there were some extension cords that need to be replaced with permanent wiring, but. The Z B A should find that this business is in compliance with the ordinance for the same reasons that we stated at the October hearing. And I don't want to get into too much detail now about those specific factors. I'm gonna run through them really quick. But I think a fundamental thing that this board should consider when it comes to interpreting ordinances, that ordinances need to be sufficiently clear that the person, a person knows whether or not they have violated the ordinance. This is a principle that has been repeated multiple times by the New Hampshire Supreme Court. If an ordinance is sufficiently vague that a person doesn't know they have violated it, it can't be enforced to that extent. But some butters are saying, or have said in their letters, that there should be no employees, even though that requirement isn't stated anywhere in the home occupation ordinance. There is no way for a person to have known that that requirement is suddenly there when it is not stated in that ordinance. Same thing with their respect to commercial vehicles. Those arguments belie the plain text of the home occupation ordinance. Now, I understand it's been said that they think the overarching intent of the ordinance was to have home business be more substantial than home occupation. But that's not stated in the ordinance, and it's not made clear. And the specific requirements that they're trying to draw from the home business ordinance, those aren't stated in the home occupation ordinance. So the idea that someone reading this ordinance would say, I have a home occupation, this is what I have to comply with, to have to guess that somehow they have to comply with other requirements for a completely unrelated permitting process, that's not fair. That's arbitrary, and it's, it creates this impossible standard that should not be applied. And it's exactly why I think the town correctly has gone about the correct process of amending their zoning ordinance to make that more clear going forward so that people actually know whether or not they're complying with what the town may have wanted the ordinance to say, but which the town ultimately didn't have the ordinance say. Regarding the home occupation criteria, first, it's conducted within a detached, single-family dwelling. It's in a portion of the basement and the garage. It's the only home occupation in the dwelling. There's no more than thirty percent of the net living area used. On this point, I do want to briefly expand because I noticed there were some comments in the butter letters. First and foremost, there were some statements made that there were only four thousand four hundred forty-one square feet of the total property. That's not correct. I believe I introduced a copy of the tax card at the previous hearing. Four thousand four hundred forty-one, that's the adjusted square footage for taxation purposes because there is a taxation factor applied for different types of use. The total square footage is eight thousand and fifty-six.
I did speak with the, tell me that the taxable living space, eight hundred square feet. That's what they're taxed on as living. Maybe, you know, there's other peripheral porches and garages and all that, but the living space. Mary Beth Walker, she's the appraiser, that she taxes them on, is thirty-eight hundred square feet.
I think if if that is correct, then what she's referring to is the first floor finished and the upper floor finished, and she is not referring to the basement and the garage because they are not living space.
Never been inspected.
Under.
And there was no permits.
Under the ordinance and under this tax card, first, under the ordinance, it says thirty percent of the net living space. If we're going to include the basement and the garage, even if you include the total of those, and at most, it was a portion of the garage, less than half, and most of the basement. Finished areas in the house, first floor finished, upper floor finished, attic finished, half-story finished, open store finished, is five thousand and sixteen square feet. The basement and the garage, even if you're rounding up to the entire portion, is twenty-one twenty, which comes out to twenty-nine point seven percent. You shouldn't even get there because the basement and the garage are not living space, and they don't factor into that calculation. Turning to the remainder of the criteria, there's no display of goods and where it's visible from the street. There were those pictures we submitted at the last hearing that clearly showed, you know, the property setback with forested all around, and you could not, where's, no commercial vehicles stored on the premises. And then regarding the final criteria regarding factors that would render the property objectionable or detrimental to the residential care to the neighborhood. Chief Walker's letter confirmed there's no hazardous material. Code Enforcement Officer Huckins said he didn't identify any loud sounds, dust, smoke, or odor. There's been no evidence of parking violations or citations, and that's to date now, based on the additional report, which I'm happy to provide the board. And I'd also like to say that the sale of the Bianchi property further demonstrates that this property is not rendering the neighborhood, or it's not rendering the property objectional or detrimental to the residential care to the neighborhood. The Bianchi's property sold in six days for a hundred and seventy-five percent of what they paid for it less, or a little over six years ago, and for a hundred thousand dollars more. It's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than it was assessed. There is no evidence that in any way this business somehow impacted property values to stop that property from selling in an amazingly quick time and for well-over assessed value. Finally, I just want to pick up on on one thread because I noticed the the most substantive butter letter that you received was from Mr. Embry and a butter. And during the prior public hearing on this matter, Mr. Embry had said that private covenants prohibiting Mr. Russell's. However, he has subsequently contradicted himself in emails, Mr. Russell, acknowledging that the homeowners association is not active, and it demonstrates a lack of capability.
Madam Chair, point of order, what does this have to do with rehearing the case? Somebody's.
I'm trying to address.
Homeowners Association has nothing to do with this.
Correct. I submit that even if there were covenants, they're beyond the scope of the town's review. But I think it's important to know that someone who submitted evidence to this board has made contradictory statements, and I urge you to consider that when evaluating statements from the butters or the letters that they've received. Now, if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them, but otherwise, we rest on the full argument that we presented at the October hearing.
I have one question. I don't know if it's true or not. This is from Mr. Russell. When Bianchi sold their property, were you asked to remove your sign, your two-way tactical sign? Did the realtor ask you to move, take down that sign when the property was sold?
Brian asked if I would take down my sign, to which I responded, no.
You didn't, you left it up.
No, it did come down, but not, not based on.
Brian.
Brian is the woman, the wife of Tori Bianchi.
Thank you very much.
And I. Wait, you said it did come down?
Sign was dirty. I needed to clean it.
I do want to add, however, that the new owners of that property who paid that full price, they are already customers of Mr. Russell's at this point.
It has nothing to do with the case.
I just wasn't sure what.
It's not.
It's a statement that a buyer did not consider business that was next door as an.
It's hearsay. Is he here now to tell us?
It doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Is the, is the realtor here to tell us what was told to you, Cheryl? So that's hearsay as well.
She stated that earlier.
That's why I asked, to see if it was true, if the sign was there when the house was being sold or was it gone?
Right.
I have a comment I'd like to make about this Bianchi sale. In Bianchi's seller disclosure document, which is a five-page document, they did not disclose that A-two tactical was next door. So there was no way for this buyer to know that A-two tactical existed with the sign down and Bianchi not disclosing that they were there.
Excuse me, has any of this evidence, well, Paul, has any of this evidence been submitted to this board?
I'm telling, I'm telling you the evidence. No, it's not. I just looked at the seller disclosure in M L S, which I have access to, obviously, and I just read it, and there's no disclosure. They did not disclose that A-two tactical is there. The Attorney O'Donnell just said that the neighbor is now a a customer of A-two tactical, so apparently, they don't object to it. But I will say that it is not in writing in the disclosure form that A-two tactical exists next door. Bianchi did not disclose that.
Two A-tos.
Okay.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. Sir, during your presentation, you said that individuals were given the opportunity to speak. I am going to say to you, they were told they could speak later, but later never came to them to allow them to speak. It was a site that happened, didn't happen. Next, on your inspection.
Briefly respond to that point.
Please, go ahead.
With respect, my recollection is that twice Acting Chair Desmurey said, the issue that is before us, if you would like to speak to it, is whether or not they're in compliance with the ordinance. It is not about whether or not they meet the standard for a variance. The issue of a variance will come later, and if you want to speak to that, we will take that later.
And in your presentation notes, did not cover that, exactly as you have stated here. Thank you. Next is the fire inspection that you had independently done. Were we given that copy?
I have it.
It was provided to the board, yes.
On the town.
Okay, then I must have missed it, and I apologize for that. Yeah, and then, I'm gonna have to finish looking. Got every other Dean thing that was given to us, we threw away. And the other, the other piece is, there were some issues when Mr. Damaris and myself were, and you and the client went through, and we looked at some of the accessory storage bins that were out there. And I just want that to make note that they were there, and it was, were not in your presentation. For now, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
I'd just like to respond that we discussed the accessory storage bins in detail, I believe, at the October hearing, and I'd asked the board to carry forward that description. But if you'd like to address them specifically.
No, you, on your notes when you was talking.
Passed around and.
When you, on your, excuse me, please. I really would like to get this over with and taken. I'm just saying, on your notes that you, the presentation that you made secondly here, that was not loaded in there, and I just wanted to make sure that they were there as the other add-ons were a part of it.
Correct. I think the overhead photos that we provided and the statement regarding which ones were still there, those are, so it is, is it two?
Do you have retold any on the property?
Two of them, two of them were removed, and it's the three remaining, and it's via the overhead photo that we showed.
I think it was only two that were pertaining to the business. The other two were lawn equipment, some other else back there. Was that was the one with the?
The shed is.
The shed that had the paint, paint cabinets in it, safety cabinets. That's the one in the back.
That's the one in the back.
Storage container.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I stand corrected, and I hope you.
Oh, that's all right. I'm just trying to make sure we're all on the same page. You, Member Bailey.
I have a question. Mr. Russell, when you moved this home occupation, you were, what were you doing at that time? What was happening? What was your business at that?
When I applied for it, I was un.
Maybe, what were you doing? What was, you know, was it, was two-way tactical, two-way tactical at that time? Was it this big, or was it?
Well, it didn't, it obviously didn't become where it is today on the date I opened.
And as.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Were you doing, were you doing retail sales right out of the gate? Was that, was that part of the initial business, or?
Yes. Yes.
Because that's, that's, that's where I think we made our biggest era. That's not allowed. It's not allowed in a home occupation. Retail sales aren't allowed in a, in a home business. Sales have to go through the planning board. I recommend that any criteria that has to be met in order to do that. That's where I see whether.
I explained I was doing gunsmithing, and gunsmithing involves a sale of parts and services and.
But also you're paying in, oh, yes.
The application I got, I have a machine shop, and they got to other people that they can back. The second, you're the gunsmith, and these people have the same type of operation. There was ever discussion about bringing in, selling them. It was about.
John, is that in writing, or is this a discussion we had?
It was. Government, I'm going by one new application isn't what I approved.
Okay, but the app, the writing on the application does not state what you just stated.
I'm not sure.
What does it?
So Cheryl, there in the record, I want to, I guess, circle back to that, if I may.
Do you have them?
Rob, can you just, I'm gonna to directly address Cheryl first. First, you had said that retail business is not allowed under home occupation and home business, and I don't see that written anywhere. And there is nowhere that says a home occupation cannot sell to a customer that comes to the business.
They can, but they have to go on, they have to undergo site review.
Doesn't say in a home occupation that you can't have retail.
Right, so the, the issue that's, you know, before this board is whether the existing use complies with the home occupation such that a variance would be required or not required for the existing use, not whether or not site plan review should have or could have occurred. And I really would encourage the CBA to limit to the issues that have been brought before CBA. The second is that the original application from Ralph talked about, is clear that, that gunsmithing, to some extent, is going to involve selling parts and services to members of the public. Twenty eighteen, there was an application for, I believe, the phrase that was used, an expanded use, and to change the description from gunsmithing to gunsmithing and manufacturing. And obviously implicitly, gunsmanship and manufacturing is going to involve selling or the ability to sell the fruits of your labor to the public, though it's both reasonable and within the scope of those home occupation permits that were originally applied for.
Difference is, retail sales is a store where you have customers coming in off the street and buying. Gunsmithing, manufacturing, typically you would sell to a bigger company. You would sell to a company that makes things, makes guns, or sell to another company. Wouldn't have a retail store where customers.
Yes.
You can do it, but you have to undergo site review. And that's, that's where you fell down, you never underwent site review. And I mean, that's just for any, any retail sales in, in town of Barrington, you have to undergo site review.
But that is a different issue than whether or not a home occupation and Mr. Russell's home occupation is in compliance with zoning ordinance with respect to the home occupation criteria. And there, there is nothing that says cannot have retail, these uses presumably can sell to the public. And I also submit that to those members who came to this store, I think the portion that had actual products that someone could buy was like a six-by-six area. It was a tiny portion of the total business, which is primarily gunsmithing. By gunsmithing, I mean the, the actual process of making those parts and doing the custom work.
May I?
Madam Chair, may, may I speak? May I address what he just stated?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ed. And I would like to address with you, under home occupation, seven point three, under seven point three dash two, no more than one home occupation may be carried on in a dwelling. So that does not back up what you're just saying. It's saying to you, you can only have one. We've already talked about having two, the possibility, a third one, which I am not qualified to manufacturing, so I can't qualify on that, I can do the other one. And secondly, according to your zoning board ordinance, some adjustments, your, when you submitted it on August ninth, twenty-one, the pictures that you submitted with your application clearly show that we have ammunition for sale, and we also talk about educational opportunities that are there.
Would like to address.
Excuse me, please. And it also, I'm trying to show that there is more than one occupation there, sir, and that's all I'm trying to say to you.
May I briefly respond, and may Mr. Russell?
I'd like to address.
You, you may.
May, may I? My business. So a hairdresser that dresses hair, but also offers hair coloring surfaces, services, and maybe does nails, and maybe sells some hair care products, works out of her home, you're saying that's four occupations?
It would depend on the.
Point of order, we're not discussing hair, here we're discussing.
It's totally relevant. So, so the other issue is, with all due respect, Cheryl, the typical American small gunsmither does not sell anything larger manufacturers. The, the typical home-based gunsmith, the classic home business gunsmith in this country is working direct with the consumer, is selling them parts directly, is upgrading their gun items they are selling. The description you gave, with all due respect, is, is not true. I've never heard of, of a one-gunsmith making parts, big manufacturers.
Then two, I mean, you're not making the silencer, you're bringing, you're bringing items in to resell.
Yes.
That's where we get into.
We buy parts, and those parts go on guns, and we assemble them. You specifically said that the, the gunsmith were more of selling to large manufacturers. That's, I'm sorry, but that's categorically incorrect. It's not true.
If I may add briefly, this is one home occupation, which is two-way tactical, which has different services. The 2018 request was to amend the certificate of occupancy related to the home occupation to expand from solely gunsmithing to gunsmithing and manufacturing. The fact that you may provide multiple services or tell different types of items doesn't make one business or one home occupation somehow more than one home occupation. What the ordinance, I think a plain reading of this ordinance would be, more than one home occupation would be, having a hairdresser upstairs and having a gunsmithing business in the basement, having two different businesses run out of the house. Here it is one business, it is two-way tech.
It's two, it's two separate businesses, and I'm not saying that retail sales are not allowed, it's just that they have got to go under site review first in order to be allowed. If you haven't undergone site review, then you can't have retail sales.
What about that? If I can interject here, Attorney Puffer, what, what Cheryl just said, would you comment on that, please?
Okay, what, a lot was said in the last few minutes. What specifically, Paul?
Cheryl, would you repeat exactly what you just said?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, I said, if, you can have retail sales in a home occupation or a home business, I would assume, if you go under, but you have to undergo site review for that to be allowed. You have to get permission from the planning board and meet the site review regulations in order to be allowed to have customers come and go from your property buying, as you sell things.
Okay, I, I believe that's true. That's a non-residential use. Retail is certainly a non-residential use of a property and would require site review approval from the planning board. And I would note that a home business does need site review approval from the planning board, a home occupation does not.
A lot of silence here. May I ask the attorney a question?
Yes.
Attorney for the, for us, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Are, are we allowed to, well, let me just say this way, yesterday, Tactical was given a conditional approval by the planning board to construct their new business. Now, with that being said, I am curious as if we were to postpone or put a continuance on tonight's effort, so that if we did, and the reason for it is, the second part is that, is if we voted against this tonight, and that would mean that they would probably have to shut down, and I would not want to see them shut down, but I still want them to go with the ordinance for home occupation. So if we, are we allowed to continue on a monthly basis so they can have the opportunity to finish building their, the building, and then turn around and closing the business and the home occupation in the house? What is the legal ramifications to this board for that to be happening?
Well, there's a number of questions, or sub-questions there, and I'll.
Yes, there is. I'm sorry, sir.
I'll, I'll do my best to answer them, and I, and I, unfortunately, I'm not familiar with exactly what the planning board did, but I would say this, any planning board decision has to be, has to assume that the use is allowed, and you are, your job is to decide whether the use here is allowed, whether it's a home occupation.
May I just?
I need to explain what the planning board did.
Attorney, very briefly.
No, no, excuse me, I want to hear the attorney before I'm interrupted.
Whether.
That's, that's, that's my right.
Whether it's a home occupation first, and if it's not, then you need to decide whether they're entitled to get a variance based upon the, the criteria and the statute. So in other words, I don't, I wouldn't, you, you have a, a job to do is to interpret the zoning ordinance. I, I wouldn't put much weight either way on what the planning board did as far as what you determined.
Thank you.
You, okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask the Attorney Puffer a question?
Yes, you can. Go ahead.
My question is, could the board just simply table this matter to a later date?
The board could. Yes.
Could we be specific on our date?
Yes, you could.
That's what's, complaining about, was that it's.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm, but may I, there's a, a big impediment to that decision that I would just like to briefly address, and I won't, you know, use much of the board's time. First, there, there are two things at play, which is that generally speaking, boards have to issue decisions within sixty days, which is never enforced because it would require an applicant to demand that they, they issue a decision. Here, we are not in a position to allow the board or to not make that request to continue indefinitely because there is a pending lawsuit from the town. The town had said that once the rehearing period had ended, if there was no rehearing, it was going to withdraw its lawsuit. While that lawsuit is pending, Mr. Russell can't get financing to finish the project that he is working so hard and has paid so much money already to fund. So we needed the decision, like the decision you gave in October, because as a result, the town would withdraw the lawsuit, Mr. Russell could get funding, and he could finish and get out of this location. And each time this has been continued, one of the frustrations on our end, I know there were concerns regarding COVID, and we certainly understand that, but it's, it's additional time that we can't move forward with relocating.
I want, I want to clearly state right now, I was not aware of what statement you just made, because when the select board met to discuss it, I, I excused myself because I'm a member of the CBA, so I had no idea of the, the legal situation that was there, Mr. Allison, and I say that right up front. I'm just trying, I was just looking at a way to ensure people didn't lose their job, but also to ensure that the law was going to be taken care of. And I can see now that delay on the board's part makes it a delay on new building where the, well, it was approved yesterday. So that's where I'm at right now, so I'm, I'm thinking, Madam Chair.
I have a question relative to that. If we decide today that our decision at the October hearing was invalid and we overrule it, how does that affect two-way tactical?
So this has been a particularly frustrating process, and it has not been the like of what I've seen in many towns, and I represent a lot of towns on the other side, including boards. The way this came, there was a notice of violation from the town.
I know that.
And they'd wanted to correct some things. Well, we had, what happens is, the town has, has this lawsuit, and it's pending, and we had asked previously for the, the select board to meet to discuss extra time and some of those steps that could have happened on the other end.
No.
And why I'm bringing this up is because we have not seen any indication from the select board that they would even talk to us to reach a compromise settlement rather than litigation. So if you deny this now, and the town wants to keep pushing forward with the lawsuit, even though it, it seems so overblown and they won't talk to us, yes, it will very likely lead to the end of this business.
Madam Chair, may, may I speak?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I just don't want to inject myself in this too much wrong or another. I'm a lawyer, I'm trying to give the board impartial legal advice. But the, the board, unfortunately, here, the zoning board is, has been put in a very difficult position. The, the fact is, I think you know where I am on this, I think it's not a home occupation, I don't think they're entitled to a variance, I think you made a mistake in October. But I don't, I don't think that, so you, it really should be a matter now as to when they stop working there or when they move, it really should be a matter between the applicant and the board of selection. They're the enforcement body of the town. You shouldn't have to be in a position where you are deciding, well, let's delay this for a while to give them time, or let's push ahead. You should just be deciding the issues before you. You know, is this a home occupation, yes or no? And if it's not, are they entitled to a variance?
We are.
So all the talk about delaying is over, I, I just, I just think it's putting you, the board members, in an unfair position. You should just be deciding the narrow issues before you.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question. I just want to clarify again, Attorney Puffer, I know you said this before, but if we grant that this is a home occupation.
Yes.
And this, that rides with this property in perpetuity, that never.
That is, that is correct.
Next person that moves in there can do the same thing, and that residential neighborhood at that point is basically has a commercial.
That is correct. Granting a, either a variance or a special exception or an approval as, like this, yeah, it does run with the land. It becomes pertinent to the property. Another owner could engage in the same business here.
Okay.
May I, may I speak? I disagree with that completely. If two-way tactical moves out, and somebody moves back in, they're going to have to apply under the new home occupation variance that's going to be passed in March. That is not true. If a variance is passed, that is correct, but not this here, this, that's not true. I believe that.
They, they could continue the same business.
The same business, but if they move out, somebody else comes in, they're going to have to submit a new application for home occupation, and that will fall under the new variance that passes in March, or the new ordinance that passes in March.
With respect to Attorney Puffer, the, the current use is not under a variance that was previously granted, it's under a certificate of occupancy that was granted to two-way tactical regarding a particular home occupation. So that is limited to two-way tactical. And the second thing that I just would like to add is that even if there was, even if it moved forward and Mr. Russell relocated, if he stopped operating and relinquished that certificate of occupancy, or he didn't continue that pre-existing non-conforming use, it would be extinguished by abandonment as well.
Yeah, it, it isn't just a variance that runs with the land. It could be the granting of a special exception, it could be a ruling by this board as to whether it's a home occupation or not.
But the home occupation, isn't, isn't that applicable only to two-way tactical? It's not applicable to the property.
Well, you, you shouldn't be making a decision based upon two-way tactical's specific financial or personal situation. You should be making it based upon zoning concerns, and when you do that, it runs with the land, whatever decision you make.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mark, I disagree with that. This goes to a tactical. Once they move out of this property and somebody else moves in, they're going to have to apply for a new home occupation. It's not going to go to a, two-way tactical is different. Theirs, theirs will go with them, or actually, they're going to, they're, they're going to abandon it at this point because then they'll be in a, a retail property. it at this point because then they'll be in a retail property. So I disagree. If we're talking to variance or special exception, yes, I would say so. Not in this case, not in this specific case.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to motion that we table this for one more month until we get some legal clarification. We have we have two lawyers in front of us here and they disagree.
Yes.
We need a firm, I need a firm. Answer as to whether this granting of this home occupation carries to another owner in that same property or not is is attorney O'Donnell right or is attorney Puffer right? They differ. We need to to clean that up. We need to understand because that's what's holding me back from voting on this thing is is this going to continue as a home occupation for the next person that owns this house or not?
That's I know, Paul, I disagree with that.
Well, I.
No, no.
I hear you do. I hear Mark does not. I Mark does and attorney O'Donnell does not. So we have all these different opinions, but what are the facts?
I have a a comment to that. To me, a home occupation goes with all the properties that are in residential properties in this town based on the zoning ordinance. Everybody gets a home occupation if they apply for it. It doesn't matter if if it's two-way tactical's property or the one three doors down. So I don't understand how it's in it is in perpetuity. And it will fall under the new zoning ordinance, assuming there is one. So I don't understand why that's a that's a concern to me. That that makes no sense. There's no logic behind that.
I I can agree with what you just said, Dave. I just I'm just hearing two different opinions from two attorneys. And I don't know which to believe.
And and my my issue too is regardless of that. Our our decision here, what we are deciding is, does he meet the criteria for home occupation? And we have to look at, like I said, we have to look at the retail sales. We have to look at the amount of space the business takes up in the home. You know, I mean.
Have to look at section seven, three.
Cheryl, may I speak? Cheryl, you keep commenting on retail sales. There's nothing in that home occupation that says anything about retail sales. There's nothing in there. You keep bringing it up as an issue and it's not in there.
It is an ordinary town. We have to have site review in order to be allowed to do retail sales.
It's not in the ordinance that we're discussing. It's not in home occupation. That's all we're looking at.
Not seven point three.
Occupation. It is not in there and you keep bringing it up as an issue and it's not in there.
Point, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Under seven point three, under home occupancy, under seven point three, semicolon, two, not more than one. Home occupation may be carried on in a dwelling. That's exactly what it says. You don't go. There's nothing. We're not using anything under home business. We're using home occupation only. Now, on the filing, and I'm going to go back to it again. It came in August 9 of 2021. And they put in there, they have Mr. Russell operates on page two. Mr. Russell operates a business from the basement of his residence, which includes gunsmithing and retail sales. Mr. Russell also has some temporary structures towards the rear of his property. Where products are stored. And it's right there. He says he has two businesses going, gunsmithing with retail sales. And I agree, you can't turn around and replace what? A part on on the on whatever it is that he's gunsmithing, whatever weapon he's using, and then not use the retail sales to give the piece to it. But when you turn around and you go inside or you continue on on his application, it's it shows that and it also talks about having a. And I'm not sure how you would say, but they they have a teaching course or what have you on safety, educational, thank you, course that goes in there and what have you. And it also shows some reloading equipment. So that's that's. It's really, and that's in their own hands. So with respect. It's it's right there is where we 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 have.
Those.
For several different things.
Those.
And that was submitted by them to us on that date. Thank you.
With respect, Member Bailey, the pages that you're referring to were submitted as the letter from the town stating that it believed they were non-compliance. That is not a two-way tactical submitted as to what its business. It's part of the letter. I believe it was from attorney Specter Morgan with attachments and that's what those pictures and that that is referring to. Regardless, the language that you read from the application was Mr. Russell operates a business singular, which includes these activities. It is one business that simply does more than one thing. You would not say that a business that allows you to have, you know, a service or a retail sale like a Walmart. It's not multiple businesses because you can get a sandwich in the store and you can shop for groceries. A hairdresser is not engaged in multiple businesses because they're engaged in dying and cutting. I think those are examples. It's one business. The business is two-way tactical. Both can come falls under two-way tactical. It's all within the scope of what they said their business would be. That's the issue.
But sir. You, I don't know, and I I can't say you. Your client, under your client's name was submitted on August 9 of 2021. And it says right here, narrative for application for temporary variance, 99 Tolan Road, Barrington, New Hampshire. Introduction summary is on page one and you continue. It's there. You you submitted this.
Which document?
Let me finish, please. I'm really not trying to be argumentative. I'm trying to show.
Just want to be certain I submitted it. I don't. I don't believe I submitted that document, Mr. Bailey. Believe that was submitted by the town attorneys.
No, this is your application to come for a special exemption before the board. It says owner Robert and Allison Russell, 99 Tolan Road. And it gives you email and your phone number, which I'm not going to turn around and do. And here it was received by there and it was signed. By signature of applicant is here, submitted. Also. Ms. Allison signed it also on the eighth day before you submitted it and send it.
I think the accused has a right to see the document. Yeah, see the document.
I'm not accused.
I just want to make if if it's my document.
May he come forward.
It's a zoning board.
It's my document.
Respect, Member Bailey, as he's looking. If you turn to the end.
This is.
Of the application after it listed the abutters, the next page was letter for. And then a series of exhibits that follow those photographs and those allegations are part of the Mitch notice of violation included that as implicitly in asking. We were challenging decision.
We see here right there.
Town saying that they were in violation.
Yes.
And we wanted the board.
Paperwork that he submitted.
I'm also concerned with employees to me.
Doesn't say anything in the home occupation, mother number employees. That's the.
It's reasonable to expect it. Next step up from home.
Want to show.
Home business allows two.
With these photos.
This man's saying he's got like.
Cheryl, you need to get a pretty long this meeting.
It's a separate packet. Sir, you have several separate. You have several packets in the same packet. The the end. This is this is significant because I'm being. So the end here where we sign. Okay, when you get into. This section here, which includes snips from Facebook. There's a goofy picture of me wearing a helmet. This was all printed by the town of Barrington attorney who's suing us. Okay. Yes, and this was this was all provided and printed by the town of Barrington attorney. So this here with our hours, this is part of the lawsuit package. Okay? I just want to be clear. I provided none of this, nor did my attorney or anybody. So that first section is from me, but the all of this is not. And I'm not saying there aren't pictures in here that are of my business, but I'm saying I did not provide this packet. I did not provide this four-year-old photo from Google, Google Maps. Here. Oh, there's there's the picture of me with the goofy helmet. I didn't. I didn't print that out. So there's there's multiple items in there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
All right.
Chairman.
Adam Chairman. Point that you tried to make here that.
No, just the point that.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman.
Yes, Attorney Puffer.
Mark Puffer, may I speak briefly?
Yes, you may.
I would urge the board to decide the case that is before it. I know that member Thibodeau and perhaps others are concerned about whether what you do, the decision you make runs with the land or not. That's really beside the point. You should be looking at the ordinance, interpreting it as a whole, interpreting it the way it ought to be and you believe it ought to be interpreted and make a decision. Let chips fall where they may and whatever you decide, then the then the selectmen is are going to have to deal with that and the applicant are going to have to deal with that. But I don't. I don't believe you should be making a decision based upon whether it runs with the land or not. Attorney O'Donnell and I apparently disagree on that, but it really shouldn't. Bear on the question of whether this is a home occupation first and if if not, whether they're entitled to a variance.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
So now, I may speak. Nothing I have heard tonight has changed from our October decision, in my opinion.
I believe that the the media is open for public comment.
So I was just about to do in a public comment. So is there anyone here to speak against this application? Again, first. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
This first.
Oh, supposed to do in favor of first. So let's have anyone who speak in favor. Now, I want you to understand we're speaking in favor of this being a home occupation. Okay.
Cheryl, I just there was the the letter from the polls as well who weren't able to attend would be in in favor of that. That's in your packet.
Got all these letters. Okay.
Madam Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, yeah, you may speak with your name and and.
Sit down so you can get the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
And speak your name.
Dennis Pereira, before Dominic Drive, Barrington. Okay. What I want like to. I've been at at all of these meetings, the ones where we continue the ones where the decision was made and what have you. And granted, I have no law degree, but it's my understanding of the law that today and the benefit of the doubt should go to person who's applying for approval or what have you. In this case, seven point three, which was discussed ad nauseam last time. Said this, that, and the other, and everybody agreed that two-way tactical and Rob Russell and Mr. Villanueva did not. Violate by the letter of the of ordinance, what the ordinance said. Now, if something later happens, something later happens. We don't know what's going to happen in the election. I know you've got three zoning board articles that kind of target this this situation. And if the voters vote for it, then, you know, that will be different. But right now. As it stands. What the decision you made the last time hasn't, nothing has changed from that except for one thing. That the board has approved two-way tactical's request to be able to build the new building and move the business over there. So if we go by what you had already decided. And the town withdraws its lawsuit because you agreed to abide by what you already decided, then the lawsuit goes away. Then Mr. Ruster, Mr. Mr. Russell and Mr. And Mr. Villanueva will be able to get the loan to build that building to get to a tactical out of 99 Tolan Road. So that the entire matter will be moot and it will be done. But if this drags on or if you say no or change your mind from what we did in October, which, by the way, I disagree with your attorney too because you have the right, you're the zoning boy. Okay? If. Drag this on, if change your ruling, if you come up with something new. Ever, then all it does is prevent two-way tactical from moving and becoming a major retail business, which will pay more taxes to the to the town and possibly more than likely weigh more people. In my opinion, unfair to keep them on tinderhooks for month after month after month when they're trying to move. They're trying to get their their business out of 99 Tolan Road and into a retail location off of 125 that will make everybody happy and this whole situation goes away. So I would beg. To. Just stay with what you decide before. That's it. Let the town attorney of the selectmen decide whether they're going to drop the lawsuit or not. If they do, then two-way tactical gets to move. And it's it's really unfair to. The employees and it's really unfair to the business owners and also to the customers who get. I've had stuff broken and they fix it. Okay, I have nowhere else to go and if I go to Maine or Massachusetts, why should I spend my money in Maine or Massachusetts? And I can spend it here in Barrington. And support a Barrington business. So I would. Employ you to just stay with what you said and let the chips fall, let them move, let them do everything else that you already approved yesterday that they could do. Thank you. That's all I have to say is I have to answer any questions or anything or no? Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Say your name, please, and your address.
Good evening. Randall Heller, 113 Tolan Road. My wife and I are abutters to two-way tactical. We've made our opinion known at the last meeting. It's on the record. There's no reason for me to repeat that. But I would like to share with you a letter that has circulated amongst homeowners within the neighborhood. And I think it's of interest and it's brief and I'd like to read it to you. As I see it, the issue is not a variance. The issue is giving two-way tactical a reasonable timeframe in which to move the business. It was clear to me and several others at the zoning board, save for one member, approved the current two-way tactical business operation as it stands at their last meeting. In effect, they shot themselves in the foot. Now they want to revisit that decision and perhaps change their minds. I personally find that to be disingenuous in the least. In any event, the entire discussion should be changed to granting two-way tactical a continuance until such time which can be designated when they can move to their new location. That happens to be the crux of the matter.
Right.
Who was that letter signed by, sir?
Who was that letter signed by?
Please.
Person sitting here in front of you right now, myself.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do you have a copy of that? We can have for the clerk, sir.
Pardon me?
Did you bring an extra copy, sir? We can give that to the clerk. Thank you, sir. Very nice of you to do that.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hello, Frank Montali, 115 Tolan Road, just a door down from Rob 99. I've been to each one of these meetings so far. I spoke in favor of Rob and two-way tactical at the last meeting. So I'm very familiar with this case. I haven't heard anything tonight that goes against the what was spoken about last time. Retail was brought up several times. I think I was noted it's not in that ordinance. So aside from that, I would just want to speak to Rob. Rob as a person. We moved into town in 2019. Rob walked across, started helping unload the truck. First time the snow fell, he's out there plowing my driveway in the middle of the night. I was the neighbor's driveways. He has always been the most amazing neighbor I've ever had regarding his his business. I've never heard any gunshots. There's been I'm two doors down about 200 feet. I've never had any issues with his business being so close to my property. Whenever he's had events, he's notified all of us in writing months in advance, making sure there's no issues with that we have. He's he would put cones out for parking and he's I think his attorney mentioned there's never been any violent, any, any complaints or violations with parking since he's been there. So. So, and regarding, regarding this issue, I mean, I don't think any of you have any evidence to show that Rob is not trying to move his business to his new property, like he is trying, and in typical bureaucratic fashion, the only thing stopping him and slowing him down is, is the slow leg sludge of, of bureaucratic nonsense, I'm sorry. So if we go ahead and do this now, I mean, yeah, you're preventing a multimillion dollar business from moving into town, it's going to bring in a lot of commerce, a lot of new employees, and it would be a huge deficit to the town, I believe. Other than that, I have nothing else to say, but I hope you vote in favor, continue with the ordinance that you voted on in October.
Anyone else here to speak in favor? Come on up, please.
My name is Dale Warren, I live at 555 Berry River Road. I've been a resident of Barrington since 2013. I am a combat wounded and disabled vet. I could not otherwise find gainful employment in my life, this is the one and only place that I have found a home, people who put up with the disabilities that I have. I have a three-year-old daughter, I have enriched my life and done better for myself through this business. Mr. Russell, he is a saint, this man does things for people, myself included. This job means everything to me, it's not just a job. This is a home business, we are a family, and we are bending over backwards for this board, for this town. We're working as hard as we can, I see it every day, the stresses that this has put on Mr. Russell, his family, my family, and all of the other families involved here. This is more than just a, a small affair, this is very, very important, it's near and dear to me. There is nothing wrong, and you did make a decision, and it was the right decision in the October meeting. The only reason that we're sitting at this table today is because of a neighbor who had a differing political opinion, and they have since moved on, they live in Dover now, and they knew that. I've heard the conversations, I know the backstabbing, I know exactly why we're sitting here, and it's because of a difference of view, not because this decision should be changed. I beg you to please make the right decision, we are doing everything we can as a business and as people, residents of Barrington, taxpayers, people want to do better, trying to be Barrington residents.
Just want to tell you, this board, the decisions we made are basically, it's just to uphold our ordinances correctly. It, we, I mean, we have no doubt, Mr. Russell's a wonderful person, it's a wonderful business, I mean, I think, I think it is a great.
Cheryl, Cheryl, we should be hearing comments.
I am, I'm just trying to explain.
Yeah, we're not discussing at this point.
It, it's not personal, I just wanted you to know that, seems, seems very upset, I just want you to know, this is nothing, it's not a personal thing.
It was personal for the person who made this meeting happen.
Point of order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you for your service.
To speak in favor?
Is there anybody participating virtually would like to speak in favor? If you are, you can speak up if you're on the phone, wait to be recognized by the chair, if you'd like to. And if you're participating on the Teams program, you can raise your hand.
We have a letter, we have a letter in favor, I'll read that. Okay, I'll read this letter from Linda Inchester Cole, it said, Dear Zoning Board of Adjustment, my husband and I are present at the last two meetings in support of 2A Tactical and owners Robert and Allison Russell. Due to the high transmission of the latest COVID-19 variant and our high-risk factor, we will not be able to be at the latest hearing. We do, however, continue to support this business and Robert and Allison Russell. We have lived at 98 Tolan Road for over three years now, we are directly across from the Russell. In all the time we have lived here, we have never had a problem with the owners, the business itself, the customers, the deliveries, or the employees. We've had no parking issues and no loud noises. The Russells are great neighbors, and we are so happy to live in such a nice neighborhood. My husband is a retired disabled veteran, and we both support businesses that are run by veterans and employ veterans. We hope that there is a positive outcome for 2A Tactical to be able to continue to stay open until they are able to complete their future building plans. The town of Barrington would then continue to benefit tax-wise, and also as part of the community, show support for local veteran-run business and its employees. That's signed Linda Cole and Chester Cole of 98 Tolan Road.
Date.
98.
The date, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, the date was December 16th.
Thank you.
2022, I think they meant 21. Okay, so is there anyone virtually that would like to speak in favor of 2A Tactical? Do we have any, any residents?
Two people participating virtually haven't seen any activity.
All right.
Muting themselves.
Okay, so now we'll go to anyone who wants to speak against this application, is there anyone out in the, yes, you may come up, say your name and your address, please?
My name is Gary Embry, my address is 20 Mills Falls Road, Barrington, New Hampshire, resident since 2016. You've, you've received a number of letters, I assume you're not going to read them at this point, it's getting laid into the, you're welcome. Opposition, because there's quite a few of them, and, and mine was, I think, covered many of the points in the letter that I presented to you regarding number of employers, and number of different occupations of the residents, et cetera, et cetera. I wanted to, I was, in looking at the zoning laws, and you look at 7.3, the very initial paragraph, which defines home occupation, is pretty ambiguous, it doesn't really say anything very, that would be very meaningful, in my estimation. But if you go back to the, another section of the zoning, which is the definition section, back on page 76, there's a definition of home occupation, and I'll read it to you, because it's different than the, the one that says 7.3. I would assume the definition of the zoning laws, with some carryover or some influence in terms of reading zoning laws or specific regulations. So it says, home occupation, any use that is conducted entirely within a dwelling that is clearly incidental and secondary to use as a dwelling, which has not changed the character of the dwelling, or its neighboring environment. And the key phrase there is said dwelling, or its neighboring environment. Now, in my letter to you, and many of the letters that you've received in opposition for many of the names in the neighborhood, our position is really simple, it's very simple, and is that a full-blown retail establishment that advertises on the radio, that is bringing in customers from three states surrounding New Hampshire for acquisition of various products, which has, there's, there's a substantial customer base that that comes and goes, that has 12 employees on, plus all of the car, on one residential lot of 12 to 15 cars, commercial vehicles, yeah, doesn't say anything about commercial, even though 7.4 limits commercial to two, nothing is said there. And as it said, and as before, you said, it doesn't say anything about employment, though 7.4 clearly says you can only have two employees. So this zoning board, the zoning, can't read the zoning laws in, in a, in a way that, where clearly, these two laws were written together at the same time, linked together in, in, in terms of, of limiting, limited, you know, home occupation, it's very clear. So now, maybe it's not the letter of the law, but it's the intent zoning articles, that you read both of them, it's the intent that you do that. And if you don't do that, then you're not doing your job, in my estimation, and you're not protecting the citizens of my neighborhood or other citizens in similar circumstances. Now, you know, Rob is a great, Rob's a great guy, he's a great neighbor, and loves Rob, I, I love Rob, I'm a customer, and I, you know, think that he's, you know, he's a great neighbor, we're not talking about Rob, we're talking about 2A Tactical, it's a different entity, different person. And we, I was hoping to come to this meeting and have a solution, and it's very difficult for you to have a solution, I understand this, puts you in a very difficult situation, because you don't want to damage his business, and I don't want to damage his business either, so what are the alternatives that could have, that could have happened? Well, I could tell you one, and I didn't check today, but as of last week, last week, there was a absolutely beautiful building for rent, commercial building for rent, 200 feet from where his new property is, 200 feet. It's 4,800 square feet, it's a commercial use property, it's for rent at nine bucks a square foot, which is dirt cheap, and I've been in commercial real estate all my life, so I'm telling you, that's a really good deal. Rob could move in there next week, and his customer base would go with him, and it's only, it's within the spinning distance of his new building. So there were, there are alternatives for Rob that would not kill his business. And anyway, I, anyway, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, that is an option, I don't want to see his business die, I want to see it thrive, and this would make it thrive, by the way. So if you have any questions for me about my letter, I'd be willing to answer them at this point in time, if you have any questions, as to what I said, or any of the other people that said, spoke in opposition, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Bring on all, thank you. Thank you. I have a.
Mr. Embry, I have a question for you.
Oh. Paul has a question for you.
There's not a question and answer, this is.
This is only the testimony, there's no questions.
There's no questions, it's just, it's just a public.
I wasn't aware of that, there's no questions allowed, Paul.
Okay.
Okay.
Save for comment when they're done, sir.
Anyone else here to speak against this application? Is there anyone online that would like to speak against this application?
I would.
We'll recognize, what is your name, Mrs. Estes? Could you please state your name and.
Julian Estes, 49, Tolan Road, Barrington, New Hampshire. So I'm very close friends with the prior owners of the home, which is Rob, so I have a lot of knowledge of the back and forth that's gone on over the years. And like was mentioned earlier, I think, as Gary said, Rob as a person is wonderful, and he's, but the business is a different entity and a different person, so we look at it separately. I just know that there's been a lot of time for this business over the growth, which could have moved previously, and unfortunately, based on the results, I'm already, 2A, and again, I, I am of the belief that they should not do any financial implication, because Rob could have the funding to move forward, but, you know, it doesn't, the home, you know, granting the home occupancy, if it is done, there would be, it was moving forward, that this movement will happen, like, that point was to ensure that the move occurs, we're going on verbal confirmation only, you know, there's no, so, you know, to do the right thing to protect the neighbors, which some are for, some are against, it's just the business has grown, it's very big, and it just doesn't fit in a home, and as Gary said, maybe the best solution would be a temporary move until the full facility can be built, which I strongly support, and I know, but it's just really upsetting to have people be forced to move from their home, due to just having a drive next to it. So that's all, guarantee that things will move forward if it's the occupancy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak? Okay, hearing no one else, I'm going to close the public, oh, all right.
Tea, guest.
Tea, yes.
Hi, this is, this is Tori Bianchi, I'm formerly of 93 Tolan Road, how.
Formerly, or is he, is he?
You're not a resident, sir, we can't, we can't take your testimony.
Okay. I, I think if, if people are taking the opportunity to speak out against, I think that we'd have the opportunity to speak clearly, so that we could clear the air for the board, so they could have some more peace in their choice, but if, if that's not applicable, then I understand.
Okay, would you, wait one moment, and Mr. Bianchi, I just want to clarify, can we take testimony? Attorney Puffer, can we take a testimony from someone who's not a resident of Barrington any longer?
Yes, you may.
Can I speak in favor, I'm not a Barrington resident.
As a former resident of New York, I'd like to speak.
I'd like to speak in favor of 2A Tactical, then, and I'll, I'll come up and take my seat now, or?
No, but we have someone else now in line, okay? Attorney Puffer, what do you?
And I would say, yes, yes, you may, unless you have a rule that says, a rule of procedure that says otherwise, that, that only residents may speak.
I'll ask you to yield, because I didn't get a chance to speak.
All right, what is, um, what is it, what do you want to do?
Handing that only residents can speak in favor.
You know, there were.
Yeah. Not take comment from any non-residents would be my recommendation, so.
We haven't done it, we have not done it in the past, past meetings that we've had, Mr. Ray.
What's that?
So we have not taken non-residents.
No, we haven't, that's, that's been our practice, that only residents would.
It's actually in favor, so it's up to you guys, but I'm happy to, to put mute on, that's fine.
Be a resident.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bianchi, you have, we decided, you have, you have to be a resident to speak.
Hey Cheryl, we love you.
If I may speak again, I just, correct, as, again, as being close, personal friends, the Bianchis have been referenced in this discussion multiple times, and I know it's hearsay, but there's some negative things about them, and, you know, just to protect themselves, I, I just know that, you know, if you gave him some speak, he's been a, they've been a prominent name, and his, whether he can.
Reputation has nothing to do with this application.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's.
Hear people talk about their political views when they're not aware of what they are.
Right, if you decide, if you decide, Cheryl, if you decide to do, to accept comment, you're going to have to open it up to the other side again as well, so.
All right, all right.
Yeah, I mean, you got to be fair.
So what's the pleasure of the board, do we all agree that non-residents would not be allowed to speak, or do you want to hear them then?
Non-residents have not been allowed to speak in the past, and I've been there, I forget what year, but it's been more than five years I've been a member of the ZBA, we had it for residents only, that was a policy, policy, not a written piece.
Paul, do you think it's right not to let residents speak?
I'd like to make an exception and let Mr. Bianchi speak, he's saying he wants to speak in favor of it, I'd like to hear what he has to say, since in the letter, he said he had to move in order to protect his rights, and now he wants to speak in favor of it, so I really.
I would suggest that if we're going to open it up, that we turn around and have a time limit for everybody else that wants to speak, if we're going to do it, we have, approximately, Mr. Wright, we have what, 50 people out here that would?
I don't know, I didn't.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking you to verify how close I am, that's all, by, by just looking, or anybody can verify. All right, 22, 23, according to the chair.
Dave, what do you think?
I, I don't, I think we should just shut it, stop, and just residents only is fine with me, I, I don't think Mr. Tori's.
I, I don't think Mr. Tori's reputation or name is being dragged through any mud here.
All right, yeah, it's, we'll disallow that. Now I do have some more letters against. Do the board like me to read them or have we all read them ourselves?
We've all read them. I think we can sit.
It should be read to go into the public record.
This first letter is from Kathleen Murray. She's from 42 Mills Falls. She said, um, "I'm a resident of Barrington, residing at 42 Mills Falls. My home is within relatively short distance of 99 Tolan Road. I am submitting this comment for consideration regarding the matter that is scheduled for hearing before the board on October 20th, 2021, at 7:30. I wish to make the board aware of my objection to the granting of a variance and furtherance of allowing a continuation of a commercial enterprise at 99 Tolan Road. My objection is based upon the following. Number one, this is a residential area and is zoned accordingly. People who purchased property in this area are entitled to expect that a resident, that the residential nature of the area will be maintained. Number two, the continuation or expansion of a business in this area does not conform to the character of the area and undermines the spirit of the Barrington zoning ordinance. Number three, the proposed variant, variance would be contrary to the public interest in maintaining the zoning scheme previously adopted by the town of Barrington and thereby ensure that growth is allowed to progress in an orderly fashion. Number four, in my opinion, the continuation or expansion of a commercial enterprise at 99 Tolan Road will diminish the value of my property and other properties in the area. This would be a gross injustice to all property owners impacted by the business conducted at 99 Tolan Road. Um, this is not a Second Amendment issue. It's a matter of fairness to all the homeowners who purchase property in the area with the expectation that the quiet enjoyment of their residences would be respected. Accordingly, I would ask the board to rule against the requested variance." Then we have one here from Noel Carlos Carnero. I believe that's how it's pronounced. And he says, "I live at 38 Mills Falls Road in Barrington, New Hampshire, very close to 99 Tolan, site of 2A Tactical. I would like this mail to be presented to the board so it can be recorded at the October 20th, 2021 meeting. I have a very serious concern regarding the occupation of 99 Tolan Road. I have two kids, and although Mills Falls is a very nice area, my kids are afraid of being outdoors and going around the neighborhood due to, due to the daily shooting practice, single and automatic firearms, and to the presence of 2A Tactical attracting unnecessary traffic, causing parking mess and storing hazardous material, which is not coherent with the Barrington zoning ordinances. It should also be noted that the corner of Tolan Road and Mills Falls Road is the location of six school bus stops and also two special need bus stops. Having such a supporting team and local clientele, Mr. Russell should not hesitate to relocate his not anymore small business to a commercial area, enjoying and embracing the success he has achieved. And at the same time, honor and appreciate all of the time his neighbors allowed him to operate from his home. I know that Rob Russell was granted a certificate of occupation in 2015 for home occupation as defined by section 7.3 of the ordinances. But I believe Mr. Russell is in violation of substantially all of, substantially all of section 7.3 and must be given a demand that his business can no longer be at 99 Tolan Road. He was notified on November 17th, 2020 by John Huckins, Barrington's code enforcement officer, that he was in violation of the above-mentioned seven, section 7.3, and was given six months to move his business, which means he needed to close on June 16th, 2021. By its own news release on March 17th, 2021, which is attached, which I didn't see it, 2A Tactical has experienced growth beyond the limits of a home occupation and it purchased a four, a four acre of land on Route 125, which should very clearly show that it is not a residential nor a small business anymore and consequently should not be allowed to continue its business at 99 Tolan Road, which is a residential area. However, Mr. Russell has been receiving large shipments of materials, which tells me he has no intention of stopping what he's doing. If the board really cares about Barrington, they need to tell Mr. Russell to relocate his business.
What's the date on that?
That was, um, October 18th, 2021. These were from that previous meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Um, there's another one here from Margaret and Bjorn Olsen.
Cheryl, one more. Were these submitted with the original case? Because you shouldn't be rereading them. You should just be rereading the new ones.
They were never, they were never read into the case. They would never, these were never read.
They were submitted to the case.
They were never even considered.
They're part of the case. We were, we considered them.
I, I don't remember. I, there's nothing in the minutes about them being considered or discussed.
Morning, morning.
I have one, two, three, four more.
I didn't get all of the letters in favor.
I have, I have two of those. Actually, I have two of those.
There's, and.
I separated them out. Actually, no, I have, I have one in favor and then this came from.
Were they, they're part of the original package that we?
Yeah, I think these are part of the original package. So only they need new comments to be.
They were already there. They're already part of the file. Same thing, if anything was submitted prior.
Because they weren't ready to, I have one here from.
But I thought we've already accepted the.
I have a new one from February. I have two new ones. One's February 2nd, 2022, and this one's February 14th, 2022.
That's the two you should read.
This one is not dated. That's just, okay. Okay, then I have two here, two new ones. This one, the first one dated February 2nd is from Brian Todd of 23 Mills Falls Road. And he says, "I re, I have reviewed the letter sent to you on January 12th, 2022 by my neighbors Gary and Chris Embry. I agree with the arguments presented by them and encourage ZBA to consider their arguments and recommendations as a solution to this problem. The simple fact is that no neighborhood should have a residence that houses a business and employs eight to 10 people, is a full-time retail and production operation, and has four to 15 cars parked in the property during most business hours. 2A Tactical LLC has changed the nature of the neighborhood and has recently caused the Bianchi family the immediate abutment to the west of 99 Tolan to sell their house and leave Barrington. Rob Russell is a good neighbor and he is not the issue. The issue is the business 2A Tactical LLC, which has simply outgrown its current location and cannot possibly be considered appropriate for our residential neighborhood. The job of the ZBA is to enforce all of the appropriate zoning laws to protect the citizens of Barrington. Allowing 2A Tactical LLC a permanent variance to occupy this site in perpetuity is not protecting our neighborhood. We hope that a compromise can be reached that would entail 2A Tactical to come into compliance with Barrington zoning ordinances and give 2A Tactical time to build a new location. I think this may require 2A Tactical to temporarily occupy some rented space, which would be the easiest solution." This next one is from Esther and Alan, it's like Alun or Alan Williams of 4 Mills Falls Road. Says, "I am writing you with reference to the above property and business operations being run out of 99 Tolan Road. We are residents and owners of 4 Mills Falls Road, Barrington. We live a few doors up from 99 Tolan Road. From the minutes of the October 20th meeting of the ZBA, it is our understanding that by a four to one vote, it was decided that Mr. Russell and 2A Tactical were compliant with the Article 7.3 Home Occupation. And I would like to highlight the following, which I feel determines that the decision made may not have been correct. It is reasonable to assume that Article 7.3, the Home Occupation, was written in conjunction with Article 7.4 Home Business. The clear intent was that Article 7.4 Home Business would be a small business and that Article 7.3, a Home Occupation, would be a smaller business. The limits that 7.4 places on 7.3 are very specific. For example, Article 7.4 limits the number of commercial vehicles stored on the property to two. Article 7.3 limits the number of commercial vehicles stored on the property to one. Therefore, my interpretation is that these two articles determine that the business operations conducted in 7.3 would be smaller than the business conducted in 7.4. We would request that the ZBA kindly review their decision based on the combined intent of both 7.3 and 7.4 for the purposes of making their decision in this case. Also, seven, Article 7.4 states that no more than two non-residents of the property may be employed within a home business. How could it be that Article 7.4 limits employees to a maximum of two, but that Article 7.3 allows an unlimited number of employees? It would appear to me that the articles are in conflict, conflict with each other. However, Mr. Russell has already advised that 2A Tactical has eight to 10 employees, which is over and above the guideline set. Article 7.3 makes no reference to the number of employees, however, it states that home occupation, however, states, states home occupation, therefore surely having any employees would supersede the home occupation permit. I would strongly request that the ZBA review their decision made. This is setting a very worrying precedent for the town of Barrington, not least as it would suggest all existing home occupation permit holders could now employ up to 10 or more employees. Article 7.3 states that there shall be no more than one commercial vehicle related to said home occupation stored on the premises. The word "stored" is not limited as to time and therefore could mean eight hours, eight days, or parked for two hours. The word "commercial vehicle," the words "commercial vehicle" are precise. However, it's been noted previously that the risks and concerns from, from residents as to the number of vehicles on the property and on the verge of the property. The language in Article 7.3 is ill-conceived as surely home occupation would not allow for more than four and up to 15 automobiles. Um, Article 7.3 and 7.4 were both clearly written to describe a small business. Neither of the two articles refer to retail trade whereby customers come and go to buy merchandise. However, 2A Tactical does transact retail business and many customers come and go daily. How can the ZBA not recognize that 2A Tactical is an active retail business? Transactional retail trade at 99 Tolan is a clear violation of the intent of both articles. Again, the fact that both 7.3 and 7.4 are silent as to retail business is a testament to the author's inability to even concede that a retail trade business would be conducted under the guise of a home occupied business. The fact that a retail business of this size should not be, the fact is a retail business of this size should not be in a residential neighborhood. Article 7.3 states that not more than one home occupation can be carried on in the dwelling. It appears that 2A Tactical does in fact operate more than one occupation, though they are all under the business name 2A Tactical. The following comes directly from their website. "New England's premier gunsmith and AR pistol custom shop, comprehensive gunsmithing slash full cerac coating services, slash customization, slash restoration, slash repair, slash silencers, slash servicing, slash optics, slash cleaning, slash lubrication. The list of services is very extensive. Mr. Russell approached the neighbors in 2017 looking to obtain support for his business in opening a resident, to open in a residential area. He advised neighbors that it would be a small operation doing gunsmithing. I'm delighted that his business has been so successful and that his operations have grown. However, the operation of the business now violates Article 7.3. Mr. Russell's asking the ZBA to grant a variance from Article 7.3 for our reading of Title LXIV Planning and Zoning, Section 67433. We believe that for a variance to be granted, the applicant must establish that an unnecessary hardship exists which prevents him from complying with the ordinance. We believe that an unnecessary hardship does not exist because there is nothing at Tolan, at 99 Tolan that distinguishes it from any other properties in the neighborhood. There are no special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. I would be grateful to the ZBA to explain how a house with the effective living space of 4,441 square feet per the tax record cards can support a business of over 2,000 square feet. We read Mr. Russell's attorney's comments about this and I would appreciate some clarification on this matter. As noted earlier in my communication, our request is that the ZBA continue to work with Mr. Russell to give him time to move to his, his retail business to another temporary location. We are thrilled that Mr. Russell's entrepreneurship has resulted in such a successful business over a relatively short space of time. Our concern is the interpretation of the articles, which will set a very damaging precedent for all the residents of the town of Barrington. We sincerely hope and trust that the ZBA will now review the earlier decisions to ensure home occupancy and small business are supported as we feel clearly set out in the above-mentioned articles. Your face, your face fully, Esther and Alan Williams. That is that, I believe. All the other ones were previous.
Madam Chair.
Is that, is that all the comments?
That's, that's all the letters.
Are we done?
Are you going to close the public portion and we start discussing?
All right, now I'm going to close.
Close the public portion and we will discuss.
Public portion was already closed, but you can close it again.
I'll close it again. Closing the public portion, we're going to discuss.
Madam Chair. The first letter that you went to states about, uh, some issues of parking and what have you. There has been no evidence as displayed by the police and the fire to warrant complaint on there to have any validity.
Yeah, no one's complained to the police.
That's right. There was many issues on it and I just think that the letter, uh, should be taken, uh, for granted to say thank you. That was the first. And the second, the other letter that mentioned the fact that the individual sold their home and moved because of supposedly, uh, the, uh, Miss, uh, Mr. Russell, Mr. Russell's, uh, comment, there's nothing there. It's just, pooh, as far as I'm concerned, I can take that, throw it out. And the last letter, I would suggest that we write back and ask that gentleman to check his facts because there is just so many misgivings. The worst thing about the whole thing is that he combines two separate items to try to warrant his validity. And again, he's just pulling at straws, trying to take from the home occupants to the business and trying to combine the two to get what he wants. And the thing that he fails to remember is this whole book, this whole document, book, uh, I'm looking for the date, uh, March of 2020 was put in effect, it was done by the voters. It was presented to the voters of Barrington to approve or disapprove. And under Article 2 with the contracts that were coming out for them to do, they voted to approve this, which we have here. And so his letter, especially that last letter, should be written back and tell them that there doesn't seem to be enough validity. That's my personal issue. Thank you for listening to it.
I have, I have two questions. One might be for, um, Mr. Russell's lawyer. Why, um, if that's possible, may I do that?
Is it allowed to interact?
Public comment has been closed.
Yes, but it's a procedural question that he presented in one of his arguments, so. So I, I can ask, I can ask Connor. Why is there still?
Ask us. What's the proposal question?
Why is there still a lawsuit?
That has nothing for us to consider.
No, it was considered in our, in our determination not to, to, to put this on the table to go forward, to give him more time to build his business.
That was a.
The argument was that he couldn't get funding because he was being sued by the town.
Yes, but that also precipitated my question as to why we could not make the continuance and everything else. And because it was important that he could not get his money to further his business after he got, uh, approval from the planning board last night to, to continue. I was not aware of what the town was doing as far as that lawsuit goes. We're only here to consider his application.
No, but George, you were asking.
Dave, Dave, so his testimony.
Let me finish. Let me finish. George was asking for a way to, to, to table this.
Table this, that's correct.
Attorney Puffer said we could.
Yeah.
The argument from Mr. Russell's lawyer said that he really didn't want to do that because he was being sued by the town.
He's being sued by the town because it stopped or it slowed down. I don't know exactly if he said it stopped or it slowed down. His money's coming to allow the Russells to, to further, and I hope both names are on this property. I have it right there. For them to do it. That's the only reason why I brought up.
Mr. O'Donnell's testimony was that the town was going to drop the case based on our October decision. Because of the rehearing, they're now holding that based on waiting on what we're going to decide tonight. So if we decide to go with our October decision, the town is going to drop the case. If not, then they're going to continue being sued.
Why didn't they drop it in October?
Because of the rehearing. Because of the rehearing.
All right.
I could explain it more clearly if you'd like.
Sure.
The select board still feels that he's in violation of a home occupation, saying that it's Attorney Puffer says that, that's how the town feels, that he's in that violation.
So why did we even have ours?
Just in in October. Well, when you had the meeting in October, they were here to, basically to ask for, well, to say that is there a violation, which you guys determined there wasn't? And if there was, they were going to ask for a variance. That's why they were here. So because you guys determined that it was not a violation, but there was an appeal process, the select board waited for that time for that appeal process before they decided to drop the case. So because that appeal came forward, until if you guys determined that. So because that appeal came forward, until, if you guys determined that it's not in violation of home occupation, then technically, it's not a violation. But if you allow every other home occupation in town to do the same thing, then I'm, my hands are tied to where everybody could do that, that's where, or the town's, the town's hands are tied, I shouldn't say mine, the town's hands.
The town attorney told us it would be.
The public portion has been shut down, sir, thank you.
So, so you can, so yes.
Explain it better than I can from a legal point of view.
Would you like to explain this to us, Attorney Puffer? You can hear me.
I'm, I'm sorry, are you asking me?
Yeah, yeah, would you like to explain this to the board?
Okay, what specifically?
George.
Town, basically, the town has not dropped the lawsuit because they haven't determined that they're not in violation. And if the ZBA determines that it's not a violation, then therefore it wouldn't be because of their determination.
Correct, it's, it's, in other words, it's still an open question, because someone filed a motion for rehear, for rehearing. You granted a rehearing, and here we are, this is, this is the rehearing.
Oh, so the end, so that's why the town's law remained open.
That is correct, that's, that's what I understand.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not the selectman's attorney, so I'm just, that's just, but that is my understanding.
Yeah, but because they got approved yesterday.
You want to say something?
Continue, that's why they need to have, they don't want us to continue.
So you're talking, Cheryl?
Yes.
George, we can hear you all, so, sorry, all right.
It's all right.
We just seem to be going back and forth on the same issue here, nobody wants to shut this guy down. At the same time, seven point three needs some common sense applied to it. I, I don't, I, I know if word for word, if we want to rip it apart, word for word, we'll probably come to the same decision, accept two things. One, there are letters complaining about traffic, I don't care if, I don't care if they call the police department and complain formally or not. They're, the, the neighbors are complaining that there's a lot of traffic on the road and a lot of disruption. That does not follow seven point three. Two, I'm going to say it again, we need to apply some common sense here. Seriously, if you look at seven point four, and I know we're not looking at seven point four, but if you're looking at seven point four and it's more restrictive than seven point, or less restrictive than seven point three, it makes no sense. We need, we need to apply some common sense to this. And, and the, another, another point is this, let me finish. Mr. Embry testified that there is within two hundred feet, forty-eight hundred square feet, up for, available to rent at nine bucks a foot. So it's not like we're going to put him out of business, and I know we don't want to do that, and that's what's holding us all up from using common sense. So if Mr. Russell could relocate his business and continue to, to get his loan, we're not cutting his legs off, we're not, we're not killing his business. I'm going to apply common sense to this, and, and, and that's the way I need to go. I, I cannot, I cannot for a second think that seven point three is less restrictive than seven point four. It makes no sense to me.
I agree with you one hundred percent, I agree. You have to look at the zoning ordinance as a whole, all of it, you know, and that's. And like I said, I, I believe reasonable, you have to be reasonable, and a reasonable person would expect that seven point four would be more restrictive than seven point two. That's what's reasonable. Otherwise, otherwise, the implication is that seven point two could have, seven point three could have a hundred employees. It doesn't state any. So if, if we're going to say that we can't, we can't apply it, we can't look at it in relation to seven point four, it stands on its own, and it doesn't list the number of employees, and you should be able, like I said, have a hundred employees there if you want.
That's true, it is exactly.
Is that what we want?
And that's why common sense needs to prevail.
So we, we agree that this ordinance is poorly written, right, and needs to be rewritten. We applied, when we interpreted in October, we read it as it is. If you're going to go where you're going, to me, you're making up new law or new ordinance here, if you're doing that. The, it's, it's poorly written, I agree, I mean, we have bad things to work with here, as far as the ordinance, the way it's written. I think what we did in October was the best we could do, and continue my argument that I made with my initial motion when we opened this meeting, that we should not have reheard this, that we made the right decision legally and politically. It's going to get, things are going to shake out, I'm, the lawsuit is going to get dropped, the town is changing the ordinance, Two-A Tactical is going to move out, and it's a temporary thing. So I, I, I think the October decision was the right thing to do.
I disagree, totally disagree.
Yeah, I know you do.
Yes, George.
Thank you, the law does not allow for us to put continuation piece there. I, I know I'm speaking out of client attorney privilege, that was not part of our discussion, but I have to say to you that you have individuals that are providing a service. By individuals, I'm talking about Mr. and Mrs. Allison. And that, Russell, I'm sorry, that's her first name?
It is.
I know she's the boss, but I really have to give you credit for too, so forgive me, please. So with that, with that being said, I think that I have to look at two colleagues that are on call-in, and I, I have to go along with what they're saying, I really think that there was no need for where we're at, and we just, you know, we have to make a decision that's going to be acceptable. So that's where I stand right there, thank you, Ray.
Attorney Puffer, your, your frame keeps lighting up, does that mean you want to speak?
No, no.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
Frame around you keeps lighting up, oh, okay.
So Dave, when, yeah.
I don't know why.
In on this. Dave, I haven't heard from Dave.
I, I don't understand why the lawsuit's still there. I, my personal feeling is that seven point three is flawed, and, and I can't, I can't just go into chapter seven of this ordinance and say, well, it's, you know, we're not, we're misunderstanding it, or it's not. I'm reading the letter of the ordinance here, and that's how my job as the zoning board member. I'm, I'm an engineer, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know how to read law, and I do know how to read logic. And to me, seven point three is, is highly flawed, and I, I just feel like it needs to be changed, but I don't see how that affects how we voted in October. We voted in October a certain way, and I, I still haven't seen any evidence to the contrary, other than we have to assume or it's common sense.
But there's still the issue of retail sales not being allowed.
Not in seven point three.
It's not in that ordinance, it's not in there.
No argument in that ordinance for any of the things that we've argued today.
Now, where does it, where does it say that seven point three has, that retail sales have to go on, have to undergo a site review?
That's on.
How is that?
It's not in seven point three, we're not even, we don't even need to discuss that. I'd like to make a motion that we withhold our, or maintain our decision from October.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I, wait, wait. Can I hear the motion again, I missed it.
Hear the motion one more time.
I'm making the motion that we, we, we keep the, the October decision that we made in our decision there.
So we keep our, keep our previous decision?
That's correct.
A roll call vote, we'll start with Ray.
Aye.
Paul?
Nay.
George?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Cheryl, nay.
Motion passes.
Pass.
Pass, three to two.
Got to fix this, the end of ordinance.
Motion to adjourn.
You've got to do minutes.
Through the minutes of December fifteenth, twenty-one meeting, I make motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Bailey, aye.
Cheryl, aye.
Aye.
Dave, aye.
Paul, aye.
Paul, aye. Thank you, Attorney Puffer, motion to adjourn?
Yes, oh, you're damn right.
Second.
Second.
I did.
I seconded.
Aye.
Aye.